Good evening. Welcome to the July 1st, 2025 Smyrna Municipal Planning Meeting. I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask everybody to stand. We'll have a prayer and Steve's going to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge. Thank you.
Yeah, I got the prayer.
Father, thank you so much for today. Thank you for this wonderful town that we live with and be with us tonight as we consider and discern over the matters that come before us. Father, 4th of July week is so important for us. Thank you for letting us live in a country where we can worship freely. Never let us take that for granted. Be with all the patriots that have served, continue to serve. Be with our first responders, protect them. Be with our employees. Be with us tonight. Let everything we do be pleasing to you. It's for in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Face the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Dave, I think it was important for us to have a Marine to lead the pledge tonight. So Steve, thank you for your service. And if there's anyone else here who served, thank you for your service. Our next item is citizens' comments. And this is the portion of the agenda where we go to the town's public comment period and it's reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the board or committee at least 24 hours in advance to the meeting. And this is pursuant to the town's comment policy section. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Catherine will keep time. And when your time's expired, she'll let us know and we'll kindly ask you to end at that point. And if you do have anything further to say at that point, please submit it to writing. And we're always available to talk to you after a meeting as well. So we have Glenn Kotant. Did I get that correct? Kotant. Please come up. You're at, if you'll give us your name and address and we'll let you go after that.
Okay. Is the microphone on? Okay. Good. Okay. My name is Glenn Kotant. I'm at 537. I think it's Lyness Drive or Linus Drive. Just moved in, so I'm kind of getting the terms right. And here in Smyrna, in the Gwyn Farms development. So we lived here about a year now. And my wife and I really like Smyrna and appreciate what you folks are doing with planning and safety. You know, with all the growth in the area, it's quite an endeavor. I applaud you for it. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that resources be prioritized for development of a section of Rock Springs Road between Dale Drive and Potts Crossing. Now, living in Gwyn Farms, I get together with my neighbors and we talk about driving the stretch of road. And we're always complaining about how stressful it is to drive this section of road. And I threw my hat in the ring. I said, I'm gonna go say something about it. So here I am. And I appreciate your time for that. If you look at my first page of my presentation that I have, it's excerpt from your mobility plan, which is an amazing document that you guys had in your last meeting on your agenda. There's a, I've shown some sections of that plan. It's a 3.6 mile plan. That's pretty extensive. If the improvements that I show in here, Mabel Farms, Gwyn Farms is already improved. And then my requested section is there in blue. And then there's a little section, Potts Crossing and Montgomery Way. If these could be done, then that would be about 1.3 miles of the 3.6, which is about a third of the project, which would be quite a feather in the hat for Smyrna. If you look at my second page of my presentation, I've got some pictures of the section of the road that I've highlighted that show the concerns. I've given them some names, some cute names. The first one is pothole rise, where there's recurring potholes on the north and south sides of the road. Then there's a guest lane stretch where the paint, the markings are all faded away. And then I called this next section, say a prayer curve, where there's a eroded edge of the road that restricts the lane usage, making for saying a prayer that you don't side swipe somebody on that curve. These and other aspects of this section of Rock Springs Road make for a stressful, if not unsafe, drive. So I'm just requesting, if you please, could do something to make these improvements on this section of road and make it a priority. Really appreciated, me and my neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, we'll move from citizens' comments on to the approval of the minutes of the June 5th, 2025 meeting. Counselor, my favorite question are the meeting minutes in order?
Mr. Foreman, unless you have any revisions you'd like to make.
Okay. Commission, I'm assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any questions or comments or changes that we need to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Motion, no second. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the June 5th, 2025 meeting, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. We are now on to our first public hearing of the evening. It's a plan of services for Hamilton Development LLC.
This is the plan of services for the annexation that is on your agenda later on for your discussion. The planning commission is required to hold a public hearing on, for any plan of services prior to the making a recommendation to the council. And so this plan of services is for the, for the annexation, it's a total of about 178 acres or so, several parcels. But the town would be providing all services here. It does lie within our water service area. So the town would be providing all services if the council chooses to annex these properties. Shouldn't we, of course, it is across the street from the new fire hall. So that is another thing. So it's, we can provide all services here without any real issue.
Across Hickory Grove or across Jefferson Pike?
Across Jefferson Pike.
So back to the lake?
Yes.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here to come forward to speak either for or against the plan of services for the Hamilton Development LLC. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And we're ready, will we be voting at this point then?
We'll be voting at the time with the annexation.
All right. All right. So that's what I thought. And I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
So next public hearing is plan of services for Hollingshead Lane LLC.
Yeah, this is a request for annexation. It's in the same general area as the first request. This is on the other side, the north side of Jefferson Pike. Several, again, several different parcels of land. Most, majority of those have been requested for industrial zoning, a couple of them for commercial. But again, this is, does lie within the town's service area for water. So it would be all services here. And again, with the fire hall, the new fire hall construction there, provision of services with utilities and everything should not be an issue for this area as well.
Okay. As this is again, a public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wants to come forward and speak for or against the plan of services for Hollingshead Lane LLC. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. So we are now on to old business. Our first item is annexation zoning and plan of service requests for 452 Properties LLC. This is Bill France Road and I-840 annexation and PUD zoning request. Kevin, this, the developers here have asked that we defer this to the August meeting.
That is correct. They have requested deferral another month.
Does staff have any objection to this deferral?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions of staff concerning this deferral request? I will then entertain a motion.
Motion to defer to August.
I have a motion to defer to August and a second. Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor of deferring this motion to the August meeting, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This has been deferred. Our next item is a final plat, Gwyn Farms, Phase Four, Section One. This is Robert Gwynne Drive, owner, developer, Milrose Properties Tennessee LLC. Kevin, there's a note here that staff is recommending consideration postponing this item until the Gwyn Farms Phase Four preliminary plat.
Yes, this is, that plat is on your agenda later on. So we would recommend if you could just kind of postpone this or roll this item, whatever the proper motion is, until after that plat is considered. Because that way the final plat, because this final plat matches the new preliminary plat, not the existing approved preliminary plat. So we need to make sure it's the new preliminary plat's approved before you consider the final. So...
So you would need a motion either for or against to postponing this until after the discussion of the final, correct?
After C3.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a motion to postpone it until C3, the final plat, Gwyn Farms, Section Four. Kevin, read it.
I have a motion. Do I have to postpone? Second. Further discussion. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. We are postponed. We are now on to our next item, which is new business. And this is annexation zoning and plan of service request, Hamilton Development LLC, West Jefferson Pike, State Route 266, across from Hickory Grove Road, annexation with C2 and I1 zoning request.
Yeah, this is the request for annexation. It's about 10 parcels total, total acreage there. I told you acres, it looked right, just under, right at 180 acres total within the 10 parcels. The surrounding zoning is PUD, which is across the street on the north side of Jefferson Pike there, which is the cornerstone of Smyrna, the PUD. There is also zoning in the county of REM and CS, which is, I believe is Commercial Services is what that stands for. Land use plan for the, for this area, the area alone, West Jefferson Pike, is the A40 gateway character area, which would support hospitality, retail, restaurant, high-density residential and industrial warehousing uses in that area. That extends anywhere from 400 feet to about 1,200 feet off of West Jefferson Pike, kind of depending as it goes along Jefferson Pike there. For the portion that's kind of south and west of that area, the land use plan actually would support low-density residential. The major thoroughfare plan does designate West Jefferson Pike as a principal arterial and adequate right-of-way does exist for that street already. The request is for about 24.4 acres along West Jefferson Pike to be zoned C2 and the remaining 156 and a half to be zoned I1. We did make a couple of notes, just really just for informational purposes, more than anything. A traffic study will be required with the supplemental of any site plan for this development and any improvements that are required, recommended by that study would be completed by the developer. Required minimum fire flow is 2,000 GPM at 20 PSI. And just a 60-foot average buffer is required for jurisdictional feature. There are a couple jurisdictional streams on this. They did provide a concept plan. Well, first off, this map that's up there now, the orange is the area that's requested to be I1 and the green is the area requested to be C2. That's the zoning plan for it. And then they did provide a concept plan for the industrial portion of this. There's not, this is not any type of PUD. There's nothing, there's no approval. Approval of this would not approve this development plan. This is just kind of a, conceptually how they're considering developing it with some internal private and public streets and then several industrial buildings. Again, if you look at on your desk there, there's kind of an area that's kind of shaded in a darker gray along Jefferson Pike. And that's the area that would be zoned C2, per their request. So I think that's all that I've got.
Okay. Questions for Kevin or comments?
Kevin, what sewer, do we have sewer out there yet?
Yeah, that was, sewer was extended to that area as a part of the Jefferson Pike widening project. And the water line, water was upgraded as well. If you already have water out there, it was upgraded in large. Natural gas was also extended at that time.
So Kevin, I know that Hickory Grove Road, there's intersection already there, red light and signalized intersection, where they have the other two roads, the private road, public road. The public road looks like it comes in into a predetermined cut because there's already a left kind of turn lane there by T-dot when they widened it. Would there be red lights required at those points? Or would those be right in, right out? Or do you have any idea?
At this time, no. I think there's, I think that's a potential that they could be signalized. I think that's something we'd have to look at with the traffic study.
Would they say T-dot call or?
Well, it certainly has to be involved. Typically, recently, it's been something that they've been a lot more permissive, I guess, on signalization, as long as they don't have to pay for them. So obviously, if this were to happen, the developer would have to pay for it.
Yeah. So I guess the traffic study would help determine that.
Correct. Certainly, that's a possibility.
And then obviously, because this is kind of the first of probably many out there, you know, they'll probably get the benefit of the traffic study saying it probably isn't needed yet. But two or three down the road is probably going to have to have one. So I understand how that works, but I just was curious what the conversation was there. I think this fits kind of our design or plan of that corridor. Obviously, we have, there's two rock quarries on the other end of Rock Hickory Grove Road, which are industrial. You know, the business complex across the street is commercial and industrial planned. So I think this is in line with kind of what we expected to happen out Jefferson Pike. I do like the commercial on the front that kind of softens the industrial a little bit.
Yeah. The one question I had, because Kevin mentioned it, is C2 opens it for hospitality business. And the height of those buildings blocking the visual industrial buildings and behind it seemed to me to be pretty important. Otherwise, those buildings, if it's not, it's not a PUD, it's not being brought in as a PUD. So it could be a metal building for that matter, could it not? I1?
Well, they would have to be, still be designer view. Metal is allowed more so in industrial than others.
That's my point, though. If that's visible beyond the commercial.
Right.
And it's not a PUD, we really don't have any oversight over that if it's zoned that way. Am I right?
And it would have to be, majority of those buildings, it would be allowed, if it's visible from a collector or higher. So anything would be visible. Some of these buildings on the front, for sure, would be visible, certainly, most likely from Jefferson Pike.
That's why I'm asking the question.
But the buildings in the back, you know.
Right. Yeah, not important.
You might not have as, might not be as, certainly wouldn't be visible from.
Well, I just hate we got a brand-new five-lane road out there and interchange coming off 840. And it's a gateway into town.
So yeah, so I think along those lines, building five, one, two, and three.
They'd need to be frontage better. Yeah.
When they, when they come forward in the future, they would need to be frontaged. Just because they would be visible. The rest of them are probably hidden.
They're hidden. Yeah.
Under I1, what's our limitation on height? How tall could these be?
I wish I could remember. Honestly, it's shorter than I3, or what I think, I don't have the coordinates in front of me. I don't, I haven't, I don't recall. Mitch is looking it up real quick.
You gotta Google it and look it up right now.
I think it's, for some reason, 60 feet pops in my head, but I may be wrong. I don't want to.
I was thinking 54. I'm just kidding.
50, 50 is in my head, but I wanted to get your expert comment on that one. I thought 50 is what I read.
And 50 may be right. I'm just, I know 60.
Ding 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 ding.
What was it?
50.
50.
60 is probably, maybe is I2 or 3.
So the height on those, unless they applied for variance, could not exceed 50.
Correct.
Yeah, that's also consistent. I mean, we have Smyrna ready makes building out there that's every bit of 50.
Every bit of 50.
And then we also just put a ladder out there, it's in the fire hall for that reason.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of a side load, not so much a safety. We've got that covered for the side load.
Kevin, is there, in your opinion, is there enough of this parcel that is allotted to commercial?
I think, I mean, I know that typically, since it's near an interchange, this is, is a little bit of distance from the interchange. It's not, it's going to be difficult for, really to draw a lot of people to this, to this area, this specific area from the interchange is because of visibility from the interstate.
The sign lighting.
Yeah, exactly. You know, your sign's going to have to be awfully tall to be able to.
Bigger than 50 foot.
To see, you know, a restaurant or a gas station or whatever. You know, you do want to take advantage of as much retail sales tax as you can on interstate interchange like that. We do have three other interchange, three other portions of the interchange where there's opportunity for that. You know, I think this is 20, 24 acres, I think. The only area that I could see that you might could, would be the area where like we're building one is. If you had some area in there, it is kind of in a curve. But I think you could take care of, from access, you could probably take care of that. That would be the only, because you're looking at 275 feet in depth or so. I mean, that's a pretty deep commercial area, unless you're getting to some large shopping center kind of thing. That's, that's all you really need for your typical commercial lots. That would be kind of the only area that I would say potentially in that area, kind of where, like I say, we're that northeastern kind of side of building one.
That would be visible from the roadway.
Sure.
Building one.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking across, we've talked about SRM across the street several times already. So I recall that was heavily office on the front side of that. And then after we went past the SRM building, we got into the industrial. So there seems to be, and again, I don't have it to scale, but there certainly seems to be more buffering as far as that goes across the street before we get into the industrial.
I would say so on the, yeah, I would say that's probably true. Office and commercial area on that, along Jefferson Pike in that development.
This reminds me just a little bit, just as, I know it's a concept, but it reminds me a little bit of what's over there behind Legends. You've got commercial on the front and all the warehousing in the back.
Very similar.
I just did a little quick math. There's about 2 million square feet of building being conceptually designed here. And so a private road going out and a public road going out with the one to Hickory Grove Road, are we okay with, that's a lot of heavy truck traffic.
Yeah. And I think that's something, obviously, the roads have to be built to handle that level of traffic, of course, thickness and everything. But again, that's.
And that would determine about the traffic study.
You'd have to have a traffic study. And, you know, as far as turning movements and signalization and all those things.
Size-wise, how does this compare to that complex we're just talking about?
I think it's bigger. There's more buildings at least than that one over there.
I was just curious.
Pretty big back there, though.
Because I think they only have.
I think those buildings may be larger than these.
Yeah.
But there are less of them. So.
Yeah, I was just thinking, they, they pretty much have one way in, one way out. And so I was just curious, with three ways.
Is it signaled?
Yeah. And one of these would be signaled, right?
Yeah.
I kind of drew my picture here, kind of what you were saying, Kevin. Essentially, taking the corner of that building one and bringing that 275 feet on around the corner, making that basically commercial front is the full length of the project.
Right. Yeah, I agree. That would be a good, good exchange.
I mean, obviously, it's not to scale, but.
Right.
It doesn't really impact a lot there. Square footage of building one reduces a little. And of course, they'd have to figure out how to get to that. So there'd probably have to be another road, alleyway behind it or something.
If you push building one to the backside of that triangle, that'll give you your 275. Flip the 180, move the two over.
I've heard some discussion tonight about building, and you know, we're looking at annexation with C2 and I1. Can we, can you achieve, if the zoning were approved this way, can you, can we, as a planning commission, when we get ready for sites and whatnot, have more of a say-so as far as building finishes, maybe even particularly some of the front, front buildings that we talked about? Or is that better achieved with a PUD?
I mean, you could certainly do it either way. Certainly, a PUD would take care of that issue on the front end. But the, I mean, you still would have, they would have to meet our design guidelines regardless. So.
But metal is allowed in I1, correct?
Only if it's not visible from a collector-level street. So Jefferson Pike's, and it would basically be anything that, based on what, just looking at this concept plan, 1, 2, 3, and 5, maybe 4 and 6, probably are the ones that would be.
Because of the height.
Because of the height and because of the closer proximity to Jefferson Pike. Those buildings in the back, 7 and back are pretty well hidden behind trees and everything else. So I don't know, the developers here, they might could answer some of those questions as well. But as far as what their plans are, my understanding is they were looking at your typical tilt panel concrete-type buildings. But there's nothing tying that requirement necessarily for all the buildings to be tilt panel concrete because it's not PUD. But...
Okay. We're going to recognize you if you give us your name and address, please.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Jeff Koenexney. Address is 1 Music Circle South, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm with Hamilton Development Company. Appreciate your time tonight. We are planning to build a high-quality business park, right? This is not going to be a big bulk industrial development park. So with all your comments, we totally agree with all of them. This will be a concrete tilt building with a lot of high-end office, a lot of high-end glass. It's going to be a very nice park. We've built roughly 25 of these type business park buildings in Rutherford County already. We've got some really great users. I'm just going to rattle off a few of them, like Icy Corporation. That's the first corporate headquarters relocation from California in Laverne. It's an 80,000-square-foot building with lots of glass, 50,000 square feet of office on the inside. And there's roughly 150 office employees. Many of those employees are over six-figure salaries. Next sort of tenant that we envision here is more of a company called Automation. They have about 40,000 square feet, one of our parks called Park 24. They have 75 electrical engineers in their building, mostly office-based, limited warehouse. So the truck traffic is going to be very minimal on a project like this. And so everything that you're saying, we're agreeing with. We really want to have a nice first-class, high-office, high-glass finish. We want to make it look good. We will not build the metal buildings. We're happy to, you know, have that part of the minutes and the records.
Questions for Jeff while we have him up there?
Yeah, the one, the other item, I think that several folks mentioned was that, that kind of that last bit of corner that's not quite commercial. What, what's your feelings on extending that commercial on around the corner?
We're happy to. Yeah, absolutely. If we can get that approved tonight, subject to that curve and throw some approximate dimensions on there, we're happy to do that.
They'd have to bring site plan and everything back at some point anyway.
Sure. And subdivision plats, too, because we're going to be building public infrastructure.
So just a general question. Do you don't see demand slowing down?
Boy, if anything, it's picking up. You know, it was quieter probably 18 months ago. We've got, you know, seven buildings under construction like this right now and demand is, is very, very strong. So we're very fortunate. So we're very fortunate. I think some of the bigger bulkier buildings that you'd see at, say, on eight forty and Couchville Pike in Wilson County, that demand has slowed quite a bit. But this sort of smaller business, more local businesses, they're still doing very, very well.
Other questions?
I know Jeff and I played phone tag this week.
Yes, sir.
Tried to, we kept missing each other, but so the one of the things you mentioned is the glass effect. Is there any other design material that you can speak to?
Yeah.
That we could feel better about instead of metal and.
We're gonna make it look nice. So we're in a, we're in a construction right now with, with a Tennessee Farmers Co-op project on Walden Road. And this is a rendering of what we're doing. We're having a high-end glass finish, and we do some brick form liner. So it's gonna look like a really nice building. We've got a lot of lighting. So this is the type of stuff that we like to build, really high-end, lots of glass and awnings and, and metal features to it.
Will you be willing to commit to that?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Is your typical building concrete tilted up?
It is, yes, sir. Yeah, we don't, we don't build metal buildings.
Even the one with far back?
We will not, I.
That's on record.
It's totally fine.
Put one wall on building twelve.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Other comments or discussion? I will then entertain a motion if someone would like to come forward.
I will take a stab, but I've got a couple of questions, so.
Okay.
I'm assuming a motion would need to include the commercial change we discussed if we wanted to. Should, do we include conversations around concrete and metal?
Design review.
Or just, how do we do that since we're looking at, this isn't a FUD, so.
Right.
Not a FUD.
That's how I was wondering how to make the motion.
Yeah, so how do we do that?
I don't know if there's any way we could.
Or can we just?
I mean, I don't know how we, we can't really, this isn't a FUD.
It's just annexation tonight, right?
It's annexation in the C two and I one zoning is all we're talking about.
We have to make sure we get, we pay attention in design review.
Yeah, because it's something that's, you really can't tie the.
That's right, okay.
Extra designing requirement.
Kind of what my thought was, but I just wanna make sure I was asking the questions.
Can't do it to the annexation, but we can do it later.
Certainly, with site plan, yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve the annexation of the commercial on I two property with the additional commercial property extending the full length of Jefferson Pike. So with that adjustment.
Because that, because that is an exception.
Services, need to include the plant of services right in, in that.
Add the plant of services to your motion.
And the plan is, including the plan of services.
Okay, are we good? All right.
Jeff, anyone ask anything back or you got that?
I would have done plant of services separately, but I think you're fine with what you.
Okay.
I was told in.
But you're fine either way.
All right. So we have a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second for the discussion. All those in favor of approving this annexation and zoning request per the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. All right. So we catch up here. We are now on to Hollings Hand Land LLC, Hickory Grove Road and West Jefferson Pike, annexation with C two and I three zoning request.
Yeah, this is a request for annexation for several parcels of land that total about seventy acres. Two of the parcels have been requested, about, about three point four eight acres total, have been requested to be rezoned C two upon annexation, and the remaining seven, the total about sixty-six point five eight acres have been requested to be zoned I three. The surrounding zoning has a mix of the PUD, which is the cornerstone of Smyrna PUD in town, and RM and LI in Rutherford County. The land use plan for this area along West Jefferson Pike is the eight forty gateway character area, such as, as we stated earlier on a previous request, hospitality, retail, restaurant, high density residential and industrial warehousing uses are particularly appropriate in this area. This includes the parcels that have fringe along Jefferson Pike, includes all of the cornerstone of Smyrna PUD. The area north of that designation will support mixed industrial development, east of Hickory Grove Road, and then low density residential west of Hickory Grove Road. All these parcels have been requested are east of Hickory Grove Road. The major thoroughfare plan does designate West Jefferson Pike as a principal archero, and adequate right of way does exist there. Hickory Grove Road is designated as a collector, so adequate right of way would be required upon development of the parcels along that road. If this request, annexation request is approved, staff would recommend the annexation of the existing right of way of Hickory Grove Road from the current town limits, approximately one point one miles, kind of to the eastern most property line of parcel nine, which is the most northernmost parcel that's been requested for annexation. There is actually an approximately, it's about just a short little strip of land, about six hundred and seventy-four feet long. It's actually extended basically eastward from Hickory Grove Road, immediately north of parcel forty-two. It does appear to be an old right of way. That's what the property assessor has it as. That would need to be annexed as well. This right of way is currently being utilized as the access for the SRM quarry that's out there. The map that's up there now, you can, the areas that are in orange on the map are the areas that have been requested to be zoned I three, heavy industrial. There's a couple of tracks that are a little hard to see maybe on the map on the screen, but one directly along eight forty, and then one closer to Hickory Grove Road that were kind of in the light green there, they've been, those are the two parcels requested to be zoned C two. And then you have basically from the, if I can get this to work here. Well, I think my batteries dead.
Except for the one on the.
Yeah, the area that's up to that orange area, that, that is all part of that cornerstone of Smyrna FUD. The southern part of it, the northern part is, is their quarry there.
Right.
Yeah, I think my batteries are dead on my. Later. Anyway, the, the area that's along where those, probably where those orange parcels are at, those are, that's the area of where Hickory Grove Road, the annexation for Hickory Grove Road would be, that one point one mile.
In all fronts, the quarry?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a quarry.
Yeah, there's, there's two quarries out there. The northernmost quarry is not within the town. Southern one is, is, that's the, their quarry.
Curious what the small on the western side orange area is all by itself.
This, this is, this is the area where the, basically from here up to here is the Hickory Grove Road area that we would be annexing.
But down at the lowest point of orange right there, that small, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where the entrance to the quarry, their quarry is, yeah.
That's why I was curious if.
Yeah, and that's where that right of way, that old right of way that shows up. Is that the area here and then over here, those are the two tracks that would be zoned C two if we annex them.
And the rest is mostly like SRM building and.
Yeah.
A lot of that is the SRM building.
This is their, their building here, their headquarters building. This is their quarry here.
Now, is there plans to build more there? Somebody told me they, maybe there's somebody here. Is there plans to add more SRM offices there?
I do not know about that. They, they might could answer that. There, there, we do have later on, we've got a site plan for a convenience store gas station.
Right.
Et cetera here, Hickory Grove Road, but I mean, they certainly have plans or, or there approved and zoning's in place for them to do more, certainly.
Okay. Well, you answered my question. Thank you.
So in short, the orange is industrial three, the, the.
Yes.
The green is C two. Is that right, C two?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I mean, the industrial's right back there, kind of between two quarries now, so.
Correct.
It not, can't really think of a better area for industrial.
It's gonna be rocking a little bit.
Yeah. And then the C two, of course, along eight forty and along Jefferson Pike is consistent.
Yeah, the one we just approved the annexation on is almost across the road there.
Yeah.
It'd be half commercial front, if that pans out.
Would that be, speaking of the arts.
C two property there to the southeast along eight forty. I'm assuming that that's accessible through the SRM parking lot. Would that be publicly accessible, C two? Or is it private, private C two?
It, it would be, I'm sure it would eventually just be incorporated into what they do within that overall development. When they get over to that part of that development area, they would just utilize that as part of their, it would almost be developed as part of the FUD in a way.
Sure.
As far as, that's what, all the access utilities and everything would come through there.
The roadway that we annex, is that public or would it be a public roadway or private?
Obviously Hickory Grove would be public. That, that right of way that's there, there's really, I can't find anything about it on the, as far as what it would have been. I don't even know why it shows up as a public road. It's, there's really no need for it to be a public road.
It stretches through their PRD?
No, it just stretches along this, kind of this, this is the parcel, it's just north of that parcel. It goes from Hickory Grove Road about six hundred and seventy-four feet, kind of the eastern edge of that parcel. And it's basically, it's been used right now as access to the quarry as, as a private, you know, drive. And there's really no, there's no reason for it to be public, but we felt like if we're gonna annex the parcel next to it, we need to go and annex it now, and we can figure out what to do with it later.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in agreement. If there's a reason for heavy industrial or a spot, it's here.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
They've done a really good job with their site out there so far. It really looks good. It's an attractive location too, so.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the annexation request.
With staff comments?
With staff comments.
Set plan, included plan of service?
I don't know.
I was gonna take a second, I was gonna take a second vote on that.
I'm confused now.
Go ahead.
With, with plan of service.
Okay. Motion to approve with staff comments.
I'll second.
And to include the plan of services and your second.
Well, as I look at it, plan of services wasn't really on here, but we'll go ahead and do it.
Okay.
It's, it's part of the title.
Yeah, it's part of.
It's not on the agenda, it's part of the title, but we'll do it, yeah, so I'll second it.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Now we're on to rezoning requests. Our first one is Delta Civil Engineering, PLLC, Gamble Lane, PRD amendment.
This is a request to amend an existing approved PRD. Surrounding zoning is R one and R three in town. The land use plan is a twenty-four gateway character area, which would support a mix of uses and services like hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Gamble Lane as a collector. Development of this property would require dedication of adequate right of way along Gamble Lane there. Now, this PRD was approved in July of twenty twenty-four, which would allow for twenty-two single-family lots, minimum house size of seventeen hundred square feet with a two-car garage. After the dedication of right of way for Gamble Lane, the total development area will be six point seven eight acres, which is a density of three point two four units per acre. After the common open space of one point oh two acres is removed, it's about three point eight two per acre. The requested amendment would increase the number of lots to twenty-three, which would be an overall density of three point three nine. And again, they, as part of this, they did increase the common open space to one point six six, which does, if you take that out, it makes the density about four point four nine per acre. In addition, the changes include eliminating one, there was a cul-de-sac that they eliminated completely. They consolidated two detention areas into one. They moved an amenity area to a different location to allow for the larger detention area. And that, so, once again, the overall open space did, did go up from one point oh two to one point six six acres. No other changes are proposed, or no, they're not proposing any changes to the, to the type of homes or anything like that. A couple of informational comments regarding the minimum fire flow. Thousand gallons per minute, twenty PSI, that no burn permits will be issued for this location. We did ask them to show the existing and proposed utilities, which they have done so for the plan as well, so. This is the, the plan, the requested new plan, the, the, the original plan did have this street, it had this cul-de-sac. There was a cul-de-sac that came this direction with some lots off of it. The open space was over here instead of being back here was the other change. Then there was a detention pond here and a detention pond here, and they're just consolidating it into one larger pond. And that's really where the elimination of this cul-de-sac didn't create any additional lots, but by consolidating the pond into one, they were able to, to build, add one more lot here. So that's where the additional lot came in.
Additional lot, looks like it's the largest lot in the subject. It's definitely wider.
I don't know. Well, there was a speaker at the public hearing when it came to the council who lives here, and, and he was concerned about, yeah, there was a fence required to be put up here, which would still be a requirement, but he was concerned about the traffic coming down the cul-de-sac.
I remember that one.
His house, basically, where he's built his house, and so that was, was done. So that kind of helps eliminate some of that issue, but there would still be a fence required there, because that was part of the original PRD, so.
And this was submitted before our PRD changes to the fact, so.
Correct.
Setbacks and lot sizes are still the same as what was originally submitted.
Correct.
Yeah.
With no buffers?
There's no buffers. There are. I mean, there is gonna be some open space in this area here, but that's gonna be some, with the walking trail and different things, which is gonna be somewhat improved here. All of this surrounding zoning is, is R three. The lot sizes are not as hugely significant, because these are all, some of these are on the cul-de-sac a little larger. That's an R three, a ten thousand square foot lot minimum, so. Like across the street, or these lots are very, pretty similar in size, real small, fairly similar, not a huge variation. You know, obviously the property to the south is one large undeveloped tract, so.
Pretty much the whole east side and about three quarters of the west side, and then some of the back is all green space. So it's kind of providing a natural buffer.
Yeah.
The only place it's really not a buffer is the extension for future development at the bottom and then along Gamble Lane.
I don't get the comments at all from those people on the right, those houses? Any comment?
We haven't heard from anyone.
Okay.
Yeah, we sent the letters and we haven't heard from anyone.
Are they continuing the sidewalk on Gamble Lane?
Yes.
So we're going up one lot and moving detention to one, one area.
One, yeah, and we're going up, let's see, what was it?
Three point three nine in your density.
And our open space has increased as well.
Correct.
Well, and putting the walking trail next to that single-family residence is a nice touch, I think.
Other questions or comments for Kevin?
Obviously, this would be under a property management, maintaining the open space?
Yes.
Okay.
There would be an HOA ownership with a third-party managed, manager.
Chairman, I'll move to approve the PRD amendment with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I second.
Charles, motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are now on to MDT Construction, one one seven zero Rock Springs Road, PCD to C two rezoning request.
This is a request to rezone a piece of property on Rock Springs Road. This is a request, uh, to rezone a piece of property on Rock Springs Road. I can get too much staff comments here. Currently has the PCD zoning, this was zoned to a PCD, uh, back in May of twenty twenty-three. The Enterprise rental car was wanting to locate here, along with having a car wash that would kind of be just for their use, not an open-to-the-public type of car wash. And so, anyway, that was, that development fell through for whatever reason, and so, the request basically is to go back to the C two district, which is what it was originally. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C two and C four. Uh, this is in the center of the corridor character area, which would support retail uses and services. And so it certainly would be consistent with our land use plan. Major thoroughfare plan designates Rock Springs Road as a collector, so they would have to, potentially have to require dedication, uh, when, as a part of development. So about one point six three acres total, and they're just wanting to go back to that original C two zoning. You have a slight plan on your agenda later on tonight to, as, what they're wanting to build on it, so. That's all I got.
Questions for Kevin on this?
So did I hear you right, it was C two?
And then it went back to C two. Heard that right? Okay. Yeah, everything around it is C two probably, and, uh, I re- I remember when they came in with Enterprise and they changed it for that purpose, just that purpose. Because they had the parking and, you know, car wash, stuff like that.
Automotive services and grand rental retail sales.
Couldn't even buy fireworks in another location then.
They liked that place.
Oh, man.
It's kind of a no-brainer for me, chairman, I just, it was C two, and they made one change to accommodate the applicant at the time.
Agree, and I know that, I remember that discussion, we struggled a lot with the car wash component of that, trying to get that.
That was gonna be a pretty car wash.
It was gonna be a really pretty car wash. Like Ken might have gone there, I don't know. Well, if you got an Enterprise car, you can.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, when you drive by and look there now, it's, it's just a vacant piece of property with a tent selling fireworks on it, so. I think this is more in keeping with the C two and the surrounding. C two, yeah.
A motion to approve with staff comments from Mark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Further discussion. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, this motion is approved. Uh, next, under rezoning is Madison Jones, Tridenton Drive and Safari Drive, C two to I two rezoning request.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, it's about nine point eight eight acres. Uh, currently is on C two, requested to be rezoned to I two. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C two, I one, and I two in town. And I am, which is institutional zoning in Rutherford County, which is a property to the, kind of the north, northeast. Uh, land use plan for this area is a twenty-four gateway character area, uh, which would support a mix of uses and services, uh, such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily. Uh, there are no roads shown on the thoroughfare plan affected by this request. We did receive, and this is again similar to the request, but earlier tonight, this is not a PUD, but we did receive a concept plan, um, that, what they were considering, uh, proposing to, to build here, which is one, uh, one industrial building, uh, and roughly, I think it was, I can't remember the exact size, but it was in that two hundred thousand square feet or something like that, I think. But anyway, that's just a concept plan, there's nothing, this would not tie anything that to, anything to this property. It was just what they were conceptually thinking about doing, so. And that's all that I got.
Concept, did they say concrete tilt-up?
They didn't say, that's what we would, which whole point, we would require that because with the, and there is quite a bit of, with the creek there, there's quite a bit of tree buffer there already, but we would, uh, everything else out there has been, has met design review. Even the building across Safari Drive there, the front of it met, was required to meet design review. So, uh, we would, would recommend that they would be a tilt-up concrete wall or some other, you know, something to meet design review.
We've looked at this on a couple of occasions. I, I think you and I were discussing that, I think at one point they were talking about some type of, uh, maybe mechanical repair for heavy trucks.
Right.
And then I seem to recall that it was some type of warehousing with maybe, uh, some showroom for a flooring company.
I think that was right.
So. Being where it's at and considering the surrounding zoning, it's, this zoning request is not, I guess, out of the ordinary, is it?
Yeah, and C two here.
C two's not gonna work.
Uh-uh. It, it would be a tough spot for C two just because of the lack of visibility. I mean, I think, you know, so, a, a, a use that's, that may not be a fit here, but might, might, could work, it'd be something like a hotel or something that doesn't necessarily need the drive-by, uh, type visibility, but, you know, it's certainly, I don't really think, could, wouldn't really see this as like a retail type space or anything like that. It's just in have the visibility from leave.
Access here is a little challenging.
Yeah, I would say for a hotel. The bridge. Yeah. Yeah.
I think, um, the lots just across Tridenton closer to I twenty-four, those were, some of those lots we just rezoned to I two or I one, right?
One of them we did. There's still one C two there where the gun, indoor gun range was gonna go. Everything basically east of Safari Drive is industrial already.
Yeah.
So.
You got one little restaurant hanging in in there, the Burger King.
Yeah, in the gas station.
Kind of has corner of the market, I think.
Other questions or comments?
Make a motion that we approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Selena. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Okay, we're now on to preliminary plats. Our first one is Greystone Phase two A, Balling Way, Red Tree Lane, owner, developer, Meritage Homes.
Yeah, this is, uh, uh, next phase of Greystone. It's about five point seven one acres, sixty lots, these are all townhome lots. Several standard comments, uh, really one through, one through seven, really all standard comments regarding, uh, fire flows and, and different things there. Would point out comments eight, nine, and ten though, eight, comment eight, we do still need approval, there's a couple of road names that are new. We do need, um, nine-one-one approval for those names. They're showing a public utility and twin-foot public utility easement in the front yard. We don't need a public, all the, our utilities are within the right of way there. So, uh, some thought that that might be a, um, something that Milten's Electric has asked for. We, we're just asking to either get rid of that easement or change it to a Milten's Electric easement. We don't want anything, anybody thinking we're maintaining something we're not or can't or shouldn't be. Uh, so we want to keep that. Comment ten, it's just our standard comment, we can take that off. But it's really with the remaining comments, one through nine. This is consistent with the approved PRD for this area, and we would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin concerning this preliminary plat?
This is consistent with what was previously approved?
Mm-hmm. Other questions? I will entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve with staff comments?
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Now any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are next on to Greystone Phase two B, Long Drive, Red Tree Lane, owner, developer, Meritage Homes.
Yeah, this is just Phase two B of the same development. Again, several standard comments, these are, this one's forty-five lots, four point eight eight acres, again, all townhome lots here. We'll point out, this does include part of Green Tree Drive, which is a collector, and they have dedicated the right of way already for that street on a previous phase. But basically all the comments one through seven are standard comments, would, would need to remain, and then getting similar comment as the past previous, uh, plat regarding the ten-foot public utility easement shown, uh, basically to remove that or if it is, needs to be a Milten's Electric easement to rename it to, to, to their easement. So with comments one through eight, uh, again, it's consistent with the approved PRD and staff would recommend approval.
This is consistent with what's been previously submitted. A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion.
Heck, a quick question for the property to the north on this page, the Andrews, uh, property. Do we have anything for buffer for them?
That's actually been approved for development.
Has it?
Yeah, they haven't gotten that far south on there, but it would, it would tie into this, this development, actually, yeah.
Kevin, just real quick, item seven, they do have sufficient water flow, don't they, already?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are now on to Gwyn Farms, Phase four, Robert Gwyn Drive, owner, developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC.
Yeah, this is the preliminary plat, uh, for Lennar, Gwyn Farms, Phase four. Uh, it's a hundred and fifty-three lots, thirty-six point four acres. Again, several standard comments, um, that would need to remain, kind of one through six. The property assessor's map kind of shows a cemetery in this area. They had talked about that they had, had removed that, but it still shows up. So we did ask them, uh, to look at that and take care of that issue, whatever needs to be done there, leaving it, whether it's gonna be moved or delineated and kept there and, and meeting all the requirements of, of keeping it open, whatever it is. So they still need to kind of address that, and we're just asking to point that out. Did show that they would have someone come and, a geologist, come and take care of that, uh, look at that. But, so that's to be determined, I guess, exactly where it is on the property and that sort of thing, but. But we need to keep that comment. Uh, comment number eight has been addressed regarding easement dimensions, so we can take that one off. Comment number nine, uh, they have taken care of, and that's, that's been addressed. We have all, the entirety of the grading plan has been shown now. Uh, comment ten, uh, this development does tie into the Naren Hill development to the west. And they kind of, um, had a street connection there, it had two different names, and then they both switched to the other name, and now they, they finally did agree on a consistent name of our Harvest Dale and Drive, so, uh, we can remove comment ten. Um, comment eleven is really just kind of a, an informational comment. This plat was approved, uh, actually back in twenty twenty-one, the first time, and then it came back, it expired, and they had to come back, and was approved last year in April. The, um, but it, in the midst of, between the approval and when they actually started, or were, had construction plans submitted and that sort of thing, they did change it, uh, they changed the road connection location, uh, to the east, uh, and the location of the sewer lift station. Uh, they did enlarge a detention area and, and it did, did move, uh, four, four of the lots, just to change the location of four of the lots. So they did have to come back with a revised plat because of that, and so that's why it's, um, it's in front of you tonight. Again, the overall number of lots hasn't changed. The layout changed a little bit, not significantly, mainly just on that eastern side there where that road location changed, so.
Cemetery you're talking about, is that, next to lot three ninety-one down there? Is that different?
They had a note.
Line, it looks like.
With the line, that's where the line shows. I don't know that that's exactly where it shows up on the property assessor's map, however, saying that, the property assessor's maps aren't always a hundred percent accurate on those things either, that's, that's, you can't initially go.
It's on another one?
Yeah, correct, yes, yeah. The mapping, the ability to, the surveying equipment and everything is so much better now than what it was when it was put in there originally. It's, sometimes there's, there's some, not exactly in the right location, so.
We, we received an email today from one of the property owners asking about the road and moving some stuff. Can you talk about that just a little bit? You mentioned that they relocated a maintenance road.
It's not, no, it's not a maintenance road, it's the, basically the road, I don't think we got a, yeah, it's basically, there's a, there's a road connection to the east, it was a little further to the north.
Is that the Golden Deer Drive? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, correct. It's currently shown here. It was up here with the sewer lift station was here, that sewer lift station's been moved down to here now. And there was a few, a couple of lots were here that are now here, that sort of thing. It's, it's, basically, that's what the place changed.
So just kind of some shifting there.
Right.
Yeah, and I think you responded well, I saw your email right before the meeting.
Right.
Um, explaining that, um, there's a significant period of time that they have to develop, and as long as they're in continuous development, then they are, uh, approved under what was previously approved.
Correct.
They pretty much, it's almost like any other business in town. If you stop operating for three years, then you don't, you're not grandfathered in any longer. They would have to basically not develop for three years, not do anything for that to run out. And, uh, they have up to fifteen years, right, to, to do it?
Once the development starts, you have up to fifteen years, as long as you continue, so you can add phases and whatnot, up to fifteen years.
So these changes don't signify, don't, don't release any of that?
Correct. Now, we are working with that owner, as well as the developer, to try to figure out some ways to maybe come to some sort of, mitigate some of those issues with, for them, certainly, and we're trying to work through some of that. But as far as what he had asked for, the extra buffer and that sort of thing, going back to what our new rules was require, uh, we can't really require that of them, so.
Yeah, I think that was really the, just, I think he was asking for twenty-foot buffer, which is in our new requirements.
Right.
But, uh, unfortunately, this is previously approved and still bound by the original.
And there may be some opportunities, like I told him.
Well, they, I mean, based on this drawing, the lot stopped what appears to be about twenty feet from the property line. So it looks like some natural buffering that may happen there anyway.
And there's some grading that's gonna have to happen where that pond is and whatnot that, you know, there, but if there may be an opportunity there to, you know, place some self-fence a little further away, maybe protect some of the existing trees. May not be a twenty-foot buffer, it may, but might still be some, what of a buffer there.
I did hear that some of the natural trees that are there coming down, uh, T deck is enforcing them to put a service road around that detention pond.
I, I'm not, there's nothing shown on the plans, I heard that too, there's nothing, there's no road shown on the plans, so, we may follow up with T deck on that. No, there is, there's gonna be a road on the west side of that pond. I don't know why they would need a road on the other side, but, um, that's something we, we can, we'll try to follow up with them on that, for sure, because that would, obviously, that would kind of remove some of that buffer area that we're talking about, for sure. Because that's where, that's where, that's the only place it could be located, so.
I think the neighbors would appreciate keeping the trees rather than a road.
Sure, and I, I don't know why that would necessarily, I'll get with Public Works and try to figure something else there, because I don't know why they would need that road, because there's a road directly south and west of that pond, why you would need one on the east side? So I don't know that, I can't answer that for sure, but it doesn't make sense to me, so.
There's nothing as far as the, an owner putting trees on their side of the property line either, is there?
No, no, surely, I mean, but.
I mean, I did it at my house.
All, all the buffering you want.
Yeah.
Sure, um, and there are some existing trees on his side of the line too, but, but, you know, I mean, I think there may be an opportunity to keep some of those trees there if we can. We'll, if we can make it work, we'll try to make it work.
Okay. These are some-
These are some small lots, so...
And then, they, these are, it's per the approved PRD. They're, they're, they actually ended up being, decreasing the number of units in this development, because, um, to the west side of, kind of, in this area here especially, um, there's, found some significant wetlands area over here they're just leaving alone. So, it actually, the open space, the number of lots actually went down quite a bit from the original PRD approval.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments?
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved.
Now, we need to go back to the final plat, so...
Okay.
That we deferred to this point.
That's right. Let's do that.
So, this is just the final plat. This is for section four, or Phase Four, rather. This is the first section of that. There's going to be a couple sections there. Um, and so, this would just be the final plat, uh, for the section one, or Phase One, Section One, uh, Phase Four, I'll give you right now. Phase Four, Section One. Um, this is thirteen point three acres. This is sixty-six lots. Um, again, we had just a few, really all standard type comments here, um, one through seven, um, but all need to remain regarding adding some signatures and, and, um, there is a, there was a force main on, on the previous plat that would need to be added to a final plat, just for purposes of an easement. Um, but, again, with those seven remaining comments, we would recommend approval of the final plat.
Questions for Kevin concerning this final plat?
Kevin, did the quantity of townhouses go down? That's down in that common area, too, right over the Golden Deer Drive?
I don't, as far, I mean, this is consistent with the, with what was it, just on the preliminary plat. But, the over, actually, the overall density went down on this development because of some of the, the, uh, wetlands areas that were discovered and that sort of thing. So, the quantity of houses and townhouses went down from what how, what was originally approved back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty, actually, twenty nineteen and twenty-twenty, actually, over in the two phases, two different amendments, or two different approvals were. I mean, there's going to be, there's a, the next, kind of, Phase Five, which will be south of this, going toward Lee Road, is where the majority of the townhomes would be located per the approved PRD.
Other questions? All right, with no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
This matches the preliminary we just looked at?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
With staff comments.
To approve, uh, with staff comments from Mark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our last item is Naren Hill, fifty-four fifty-eight Cooks Lane, owner, developer, Naren Family Trust, Century Communities.
Yeah, this is, um, Naren Hill, it's on Cooks Lane, it's a hundred and forty-five lots, thirty-four point one-one acres. Um, it's part of the PRD, Cooks Lane PRD, is how it was brought in originally. Um, again, several standard comments, um, really, one through, uh, one through six, really, one through eight are all standard comments. I will point out comment seven. Uh, Cooks Lane is a, a collector. Uh, they are showing the right-of-way, uh, dedication there for the, that street now is something that Mr. King had worked with them and, and with regards to what the, our plans are and the improvements to that road and the right-of-way that was necessary, and so, that would be dedicated on their side, uh, of the road there. Um, but, a few other comments. We did ask for some additional dimensions, uh, kind of, regarding a CUD waterline easement, just so that we know from the rear lot line there for lots one, one oh eight, one oh nine, that has been taken care of and can be removed. Again, comment ten, again, the similar comment as to Gwen Farms, the road name, that, that will be a continuous between the two, uh, developments there. There has, uh, there has been an agreed-upon name there, Harvest Hill Drive, so, both plats show the correct name now, so that can be, uh, removed as well. And again, uh, eleven is really just a, a, um, informational comment. Uh, this preliminary plat was approved previously, um, but there have been some changes. Uh, they eliminated a road that was known as Seville Road, did relocate six lots that have been, uh, shown on that roadway. Also, again, as I stated earlier, it does include the dedication of right-of-way for the Cooks Lane improvements, which wasn't known at the time that the original preliminary plat was brought in, as well as relocated a sewer lift station to the southern end of the property, and relocated modified, uh, the walking trail amenity. So, this is, um, some tweaks as to what was, uh, approved originally on the preliminary plat, so, um, comments twelve and thirteen are, I'm sorry, comment twelve, rather, is a, from CUD, and they would need to work through that with CUD, so that would need to remain. So, with removal of comments nine and ten, uh, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin concerning, uh, this, uh, resounding request?
Kevin, I know on the northern end, we have neighbors that we've actually dealt with before, with the adjoining Maple Farms subdivision.
Correct.
But, as I look at this, and I'm just asking the question, there's a lot of natural detention and buffer already built in. Is there any need to buffer that northern line at all, in your opinion?
Again, we're kind of, this was approved before we made our changes. Um, I mean, I think, certainly, there's maybe some opportunity there. I'd have to go back and, and look at the grading plans and all that stuff, and what's, what's shown in that area.
There's a lot of open space there.
There's a lot of open space there. Some of it is going to be, has some improvements there with some walking trails and whatnot.
There is some mandatory buffering there along the streams, right?
Correct.
Thirty-foot minimums.
Right. They're going to have to leave some of that area alone, anyway. Um, where, kind of, those areas are, kind of, shown in, kind of, the, like, green color.
Some pretty heavy terrain right back there.
Yeah, it is.
This is, from the first one, there was a court there, that I'll say, you know, the developer's been very amenable to discussion, and they took that out, which opened that up back there, which is favorable by those-
It's a good thing.
-those very people.
Yeah. Well, I just want to put the question out there, just to make sure.
Hey, down at the, I guess, the south tip of this, there's a, a lot that says Townes Smirnoff Pump Station Lot. Is that an existing pump station?
That'll, that'll be a new lift station.
A new one?
Yes. Again, that's what, that was shown, kind of, more to the north, through northern, kind of, middle part of the development. It's actually going to be on the south side. But, that was one of the changes from the previous plat.
So, question for Kevin. On where Cooks Lane makes the curve, the curve has gotten softened. Uh, there's been some questions come up. There's a couple driveways that are right at that curve. Did their driveways get extended to the new road? Is the developer taking care of that?
I was, kind of, the fur of Mr. King. He's the one that been working through that.
We knew we'd get Charles before you did.
Almost made it, Kevin. Uh, right, we read along-
The road, we will adjust those driveways to the new road, and then, we will be during that time right of way. We will discuss those landowners, if they would like some of that old roadway back, 'cause we would not want to keep it. So, we may do some in-kind, uh, trade there, 'cause, uh, that's not, no, vacating, like I said, how they do that, we'll abandon the, literate the old roadway and to see if the homeowners, if they would want to take that in, you know, that there. So, that's what we'll do when we get to that locations.
Well, we got you up here. And then, from the curve, as it goes towards Rock Springs, that's north-south lane, and then a turn lane.
Yeah.
Continuous. Well, I can see on the drawing here, it looks like it's taken from the center road and it's going out both sides?
We're going to hold the far side on hold, because, like I said, the developer here, they have donated all that right-of-way, so we will be pulling to their side. So, when we get to that last property, we will be pulling to that side. The vacant lot there, we will be pulling towards it, because the other side, we'll be use that as a, a fixed point, and then work across from there. Just because we have all this right-of-way already donated to us.
Okay, so, where you're talking about the, the vacant lot, that's at the top of the page, that's the Briers.
Right.
So, at one point, there was talk about making that a, um, what was the term you used? A speed dampener?
Well, I was looking at maybe, but like I said, that is not in this first round of construction, uh, roadway plans. Right now, we're going from that point back to Lee Road, and that will, will taper back down to a two-lane for now. And when we come back and look at the portion of Rock Springs from the Maple Farms up to Cooks Lane, we will do that as one construction project. So, we will look at it then, when we come back to adding a turn lane on, uh, Rock Springs, and then the possibility of three-laning that on down and having that three-lane section, uh, when it hit, when Cooks Lane comes into Rock Springs.
Yeah, I definitely think you're going to need a dampener there with the speeding people up on this, softening of the curve.
Yeah, right.
You're going to need a, time to slow down.
But, right now, we're just trying to work with the developer, because I know they're on a pretty tight schedule to start their infrastructure on roads, so that's why we have just stopped at their property to go there and try to get down to Lee Road. Uh, we'll have some properties there that, uh, we'll be having to get some right-of-way easement from them, and down there, it is on center line widening. So, we'll possibly four or five properties that we will be hitting in the curve and then on down to Lee Road.
Mm-hmm.
And try to get that section of road first, and then, and also try to get that Lee Road intersection, uh, fixed.
So, if I just heard you right, on the south end, when we're coming from the development towards Lee Road, there are, there's five parcels.
Right.
Before you hit Lee, so all of that is intended to go onto that side of the road?
It's, when we come there, after we come out of that curve, it will pretty much go back to center line. So, it'd be a symmetrical widening on center line.
Gotcha. Okay.
Because when we come up there, that CUD has, has to come from Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road. They have to come all the way up Cooks Lane to bring water to this development. So, we're working with them on the easements as we're working on our roadway plans.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? There you go. Now, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ken. Further discussion?
Just a comment that, um, through, it's nice to see, um, with all the fuss that we've heard of late from citizens coming up, making comments about how developers were responding and so forth like that. You know, I just want to shout out to this developer's, um, held to their word.
A motion in a second? Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. We're now on to site plans. Our first item under site plans was In-N-Out Burger, nine-nine-nine Industrial Boulevard, owner, developer, In-N-Out Burger. Mitch?
We just, yeah, they have requested a deferral of this project until the September meeting, so, that's, that's the request that's in front of you, so...
As far as this goes, this, uh, site plan, the developers have requested a deferral until September, so...
I'll make a motion to defer In-N-Out Burger until the September meeting.
I have a motion to defer until the September meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of this deferral, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This site plan has been deferred till the September meeting. Our next site plan is Lot One, Home Depot Subdivision, one-one-seven-zero, Rock Springs Road. Owner, developer, Lee Tashi Partners, MDT Construction.
This is a site plan for the parcel that you looked at earlier tonight for the rezoning. Uh, says Lot One within the Home Depot subdivision. Uh, this development is proposed for a nine-thousand-square-foot general retail building, which would accommodate a maximum of six tenants. Access points to the site would be provided via an access segment through the Home Depot parcel off of Austin Lee Drive. In addition, there would be two access points off of Rock Springs Road. The property is currently zoned PCD for the allowed use of automobile rental with a detached car wash, and the proposed use is not permitted underneath that existing zoning, hence the rezoning request that you heard earlier tonight. So, we did see some revised plans come through yesterday compared to one packet tomorrow last week, so some of these numbers have been adjusted accordingly. Uh, one of the staff comments we have later was in regards to the fire truck making adequate movement throughout the site, and as a result of that comment, they have added the second access off of Rock Springs Road further south on the site. So, for that reason, there's two access points. Last week, there was one access point. We now have two access points. Um, square footage of vehicular user on the site is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ten square feet, which would require two thousand two hundred and eighty-one square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing for five thousand five hundred square feet. Parking required of forty-five spaces, and they're showing for fifty-three. Handicap parking space requirement of three spaces, which they are showing for all three now. The landscape plan shows maple trees along both road fringes of Austin Lee Drive and Rock Springs Road. Strawberry is shown between the street trees along pavement park area. Additional shrubbery is shown around the base of the building. Architecture elevations have also been revised since last week. The elevations show the buildings to be finished with a mixture of brick, stone, uh, stucco, and glass glazing. Due to the orientation and location of the building, all faces will be required to meet designer view of at least seventy-five percent primary materials. Last week, we did have issues with the rear of the building not meeting the seventy-five percent threshold, but that is now being met at this time. The, uh, on the back and lower part of the bottom left side of the elevations that are up on the screen. Uh, that was previously all stucco material. They're now showing that to be all brick. So, as a result of that, all of these elevations are now meeting designer view. Standard comments one through seven would all remain at this time, and staff comment one regarding the zoning of the property being PCD going through the rezoning process. So, uh, if it were to be approved tonight for the site plan, the approval would be conditional upon the rezoning of the site from council. Comment number two, the stormwater must drain to the existing pond behind Home Depot, or detention is required to be located on site, come from our stormwater department. So, that comment will remain, uh, when they have adequate time to review it. Uh, comment number three estimates show streets gaping on Austin Lee Drive to meet the designer view requirements. There will need to be some additional shrubbery planted between those street trees. Uh, designer view requires along road fringes to have a tree space no more than forty feet apart, um, in addition to shrubbery between those street trees. So, we just need some shrub, additional shrubbery shown in that area. Uh, comment number four, as mentioned earlier, uh, the hundred and fifty feet length in front of the building. They did add the second access point off of Rock Springs Road to sufficiently address comment number four, so that can be removed. Uh, number five, we need dumpster enclosure elevations to match the primary material on the building. Comment, number six was regarding the architectural elevations, which have been addressed sufficiently, so that comment can be removed as well. Uh, number seven is more of an informational comment. The square footage of the building allo- allowed for the restaurant use is a maximum of one thousand five hundred square feet, based on the provided parking shown. So, we don't end up in a situation where all these tenants are restaurants. We don't have adequate parking on the site, so we want to limit the number of restaurant square footage on the site to fifteen hundred square feet. And, number eight, regarding the number of parking spaces, there was additional handicap parking space that was required per ADA requirements, and that is now being met, so, uh, comment eight can be removed. Uh, staff comments four, six, and eight have all been addressed, can be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Okay, questions for Mitch while we have him up here?
I said this could support one restaurant?
Fifteen hundred square feet. So, typically, these will come in as, they'll guesstimate at what the spaces will look like inside the building. Whenever we have tenants that move- the spaces will look like inside the building, whenever we have tenants that move in, those lines will shift for the walls inside the building, so it's restricted to 1,500 square feet, whether they're big or small, that's what they'll limit it to.
Mitch, the grease trap's going to go in in the early phase before there's a tenant?
It should, I believe, I think it's on the plans.
It's on the plans, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be in there before.
Other questions or discussion?
Yeah, Mitch, in regard to the landscaping plan, I consider yourself a driver on Austin Lee, turning left there, if you're facing the east, you're on Austin Lee, you're turning left down towards Nashville Highway, is the landscaping on that corner going to obstruct the view of oncoming traffic north on Rock Springs, that's a pretty tricky left turn there?
We can take another look at that when it comes back through for billing permits, take a look at that, see if it's meeting all of our vision guidelines stated in the ordinance at that time, too, just to double check and verify it, make sure it's not.
Mitch or Kevin, from a lighting perspective, parking lot lighting, you've got a lot of residential just across the street, is there any shadowing of any kind, or?
Should be all commercial across the street.
It is all, it's all commercial on the other side, there's residential, they would have to meet the-
Okay, I'll just up a little bit from the residential.
Yeah, there's design review has a maximum height on the height of those lights, poles, and those kind of things, it would have to meet that requirement.
Okay, I see it now, that's chiropractor and all that in there.
Other questions, comments? There are none, now entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, this motion and site plan are approved. Next, under site plans, Nissan P33C Backdoor Module FPL-1 and FPL-2 modifications, 983 Nissan Drive, owner developer Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County.
Yeah, so this is a modification to the main Nissan building, there would be an 18,000-square-foot addition onto the rear north end of the build, of the main building, in addition to that, there are three dock stations, loading dock areas that would be added as well, no real square footage addition, but that would be another modification as part of this plan that they're proposing. Landscape plan, there's no additional vehicular use area proposed on the site as a result of this modification, so no additional landscaping is required. The architectural elevations show the addition to be finished with metal and concrete, which would blend with the existing building elevations. Standard comments, one through six would all remain, and they have sufficiently addressed all of our staff comments, so with that, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Mitch on the-
Site plan.
Can you show me his abstaining due to my employment with Nissan?
Other questions or comments?
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion is approved with one abstention. So this is our last item under site plans, SRM Gas Station at Cornerstone, West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road, owner developer Hollingshead Land LLC.
SRM is proposing for an 11,940-square-foot building, that would include 8,028 square feet of retail and restaurant space, with a 3,912-square-foot convenience store, in addition, 24 regular fuel pumps would be shown, with an additional 3,150 square feet of diesel fuel pump canopy, there would be four pumps in that diesel canopy, there would be entrances to the site shown off of Hickory Grove Road, with additional entrances off of a private road to the south of the site, which has not been constructed at this time, and also via Hollingshead Circle, and that is located to the east. Square footage of vehicular use area, 1.72 acres, and that does require 7,526 square feet of landscaping, Appken is showing for 8,688 square feet, meeting our requirements. Total parking breakdown, 40 spaces for the restaurant, and 40 spaces for retail, does yield a total requirement of 80 spaces, and they're showing for 124, handicap parking space required of five, and they're showing for six. The landscape plan shows street trees planted along West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road, with additional varieties of trees planted within the site, in landscape islands, and along the private roadways around the site, shrubbery is shown between the street trees and within landscape islands throughout the site, architecture elevations show the building to be finished with stone, concrete, and glass glazing, this PUD comment can be removed. Number five, the landscape plan does not meet designer view, we asked them to revise that, and add a landscape schedule to the landscape plans, we know a number of trees, and make sure they're within regulations of designer view. Number six, along the same lines of comment number five, so remove comment number six, and morphed five and six into one comment, so comment number six can be removed. Number seven, the architectural elevations do not meet designer view, as stated earlier, the, this location is part, morphed five and six into one comment, so comment number six can be removed. Number seven, the architectural elevations do not meet designer view, as stated earlier, the, this location is part of the cornerstone at Smyrna PUD, and the retail buildings within that PUD were approved for a combination of concrete, glass, stone, brick, and cement board, with no minimum percentages of primary materials, the proposal is for 48% concrete, 41% glass, 2% stone, and 9% metal. Comment number eight, we asked them how many pumps were used for the fuel stations, for the diesel pumps, and they have shown that two islands, so four total pumps will be used for that, so comment number eight can be removed. Number nine, we asked for the occupancy load for each of the businesses would be, and that the building will be required to be sprinkled, if the occupancy load does exceed 99 people, at this time, it is just speculation what would be the inside of the building, so it's unknown at this time, more likely, the applicant will end up sprinkling the building due to the number of people being over 99 inside the buil, building at any time, so comment number nine will remain at this time until, likely when building permits are pulled. Comment number 10, we asked them to extend the sidewalk along the relocated Hickory Grove Road to the Hollingshead Circle intersection, Appken has noted that this will be done at a later time, the, they have provided the upper right corner of the plan on the screen does show a proposed future development, not finalized at this time, but there are future plans, so in response to comment number 10, they, whenever that site plan came through, is when that sidewalk would get extended, but staff would like to keep that comment at this time. Comments 11 and 12 are utilities comments, and both have been addressed efficiently, and comment number 13, we had additional comment, that was, that did come up today, we do need a dumpster enclosure elevation to be submitted, to make sure it does meet all of our design standards for that, so comments four, six, eight, 11, and 12 have all been addressed, and then we had all of that remain with additional of comment number 13, but with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments, and the applicant is here if you do have any questions.
The, the excluded square there on the corner, what is that?
It is not owned by the applicant, and smaller tract, that's just not used as part of this.
Got it, okay. Is that, is that, that's not annexed, that piece?
Oh, I don't-
I honestly don't know, I just think it has been annexed, because it was not requested.
It's not part of BRD, so I don't know that-
I don't believe it's in the city. Parcel directly across Hickory Grove Road there, that corner parcel is not in the city either.
Right, that's the one adjacent to the parcel.
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions?
We have just a question about item seven on staff comments, it's part of Cornerstone of Smyrna PUD, is that the PUD we saw a while ago?
Where the plant, where their office headquarters of the building is located.
That entire area-
Yes.
Does not get scrutinized individually as they come in at all?
Well, they have, within that PUD, they had some, there were some additional materials, such as the concrete, and that primarily being the concrete, was added as a primary material within that PUD.
Well, I will say this, everything they've done was beautiful, it looks good, but I was just curious about the PUD, I didn't, I don't, maybe I didn't realize the whole PUD could have that much concrete in it, but it's beautiful, they do a good job with it, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, this is, this has a tremendous amount of glass in this building as well, which is similar to their office.
I see the renderings of it, it is gorgeous, it's a good-looking building. I don't underestimate what they can do with concrete.
No, it's the showcase.
Yeah, I mean, item number three, which I know is T-Dot, but it's, they're showing it as a write-in, write-out, right, isn't that correct?
That's correct, yeah, that's, that's what they're showing, that's, I think that's all they have there, because there is a median right there.
Not a cut there, there's not a-
Right, I think it's a median.
Other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Salina.
Salina.
Motion in a second, further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved, we are now on to the July bond review reports.
Yes, go through that real quickly here, Stewart's Creek cottages, this is one they have, they have still some cleanups to do on some things, primarily some, all relatively minor stuff, they have paved all the streets and everything now, and so we can reduce that one to 15,000, begin that one-year maintenance period, patent retreat phase one, as well as patent retreat phase two, section one, these, these are both at the end of their maintenance periods, if everything gets cleaned up there, we could release, otherwise extend three months on both of those. Buckingham Place, section one, again, another, it's the end of the maintenance period, just a few minor things to clean up there, if they, hopefully they get that done by, they got a month, hopefully they get that done by August 1st, we could release that one, otherwise a three-month extension. Woodcrest 4, this is one that they need to, I get a little frustrated with, because they do need to get this paved in this section, for whatever reason, this, they've paved all the other ones, they haven't paved this one, would not recommend more than a three month extension on this one, hopefully they, they need to get there and get that one paved, and I, I've already had that conversation with them, hopefully that'll-
You may be giving most of the call.
Yeah, this is one, it's, well, they've paved every other section in there out there, but they haven't paved that phase for some reason, so. Hundred Point Annex, section three, phase one, this is a maintenance bond, there's a couple items there that they've had some erosion, some of that tied to the adjoining development, it's a- But that's one that, it's, again, if they get everything cleaned up, we could release that one, otherwise, a three-month extension, because that one's, they're, they're built out, they need to go ahead and finish that up. Streets are paved and everything, just a few minor cleanup items. Blading section- Again, this one is another one that's at the end of their maintenance period, and they had indicated, the last time we extended it, they, that that would be, be the last one they would need, so hopefully they get that finished by August. This one's, is not quite built out yet, we have had it now, actually, three years, but we would recommend a six-month extension on that one, as they're, indicated their sales are a little slow due to the interest rates, and then Buckingham Place, section one- We, just a few minor cleanup items, if you would clean those up, we could get that taken care of, and release that one, otherwise, a three-month extension on that one as well. That's all I got.
For Kevin concerning the bond review reports. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, move to approve the bond review report.
A motion to approve the bond review report, do I have a second?
An enthusiastic second.
A second, enthusiastic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved. Staff com-
Thing I would mention, July 31- Work session, and so I would- So, any topics, or anything you would like us to bring up, look at, research, talk about that, otherwise, it's at 3:00 that Thursday afternoon, we'll, we'll see you then.
Storage places, and that may be a topic of discussion, because we have some looking so commercial these days.
Okay.
About indoor versus external, and maybe doing something more different with those.
Right.
Topic about, talking about trees we're cutting down, and trees we're not putting back, and just some sort of a matrix plan that we can consider?
Probably the, the need for tree ordinance.
Okay.
The, remind everybody of our 4th of July events coming up on Thursday night, I think events started- Going off at dark, which will be around 9:00 PM.
Should be good weather.
Yep, so it's one of our premier events in the town, one of the probably- One of the most attended events, so look forward to seeing everybody out, and enjoy the fireworks. Long time, and it seems like it just gets better every year.
On the same day at 10:00 AM down at the Justice Center, we'll be hanging up- Who was the former police commissioner here, and I know a lot of people thought fondly of Sally, and she's got a big history with our town, and so if you'd like to come and be a part of that, it's at 10:00 AM down at the Justice Center at the Police Department.
Anything else? Well, I know that we want to wish everybody a safe and happy Independence Day, thank you again for our veterans, for a long time, you know, once you have it, it's, it's something you don't want to let go of, and there have been so many sacrifices by our veterans and their families over the years to remain that way, so with that, we stand adjourned.